I'm happy to report that in the early April, we had an online auction for some surplus equipment, various departments. We netted $21,615, provided the council with a copy of the results and there's a copy for the public to view. We also received a 100% incentive certificate of award from the Joint Insurance Fund that was given to us on April 2nd at the awards ceremony. The council has been given a copy, a copy for the public to view. Status of paving, been in contact with you, been in contact with the municipal engineer as of today. They've completed the paving of, or the flat work on Hana Street, and they reported to me that they are now moving onto Geraldine Street, which they began today. There's also county paving taking place in town. County is doing Bellevle Avenue, Union Avenue, they're doing flat work on Bellevle Avenue as of today. We are hoping that Geraldine Street will be completed within two weeks now, it's down to two weeks. After that's completed, they'll go directly to the Friendly House and complete with our budgeting budgets. Yesterday, I met with representatives from public service. At the last council meeting, there were some complaints made about some destruction to Karma Avenue as a result of gas main repair work. I'm happy to report that at the result of our meeting yesterday, Public Service contacted me back and notified me that they will work on that this week, and that any destruction that they caused on Karma Avenue will be completely restored as of next week, weather permitted. We also discussed other areas of town where they have either damaged our sidewalks or paving, such as the Bellevle Senior parking lot. Last summer, they did a gas line replacement there, and they did a lot of destructions to the gas, uh, the parking lot. So they agreed to sit with us once we have a total list of them. There's approximately 140 locations throughout town where they caused some damage, and they will work on a schedule to complete that. Many of you may have noticed that the installation of the streetlights has begun. I'm happy to say I've received many compliments from residents and people who pass through town on how beautiful that they look. Well, Public Service started the job as promised, and they had some lights up prior to the Memorial Day holiday, but then they got called to an emergency job at Newark Airport. But I received communications late yesterday that they will begin completion of that project as of June 22nd, and weather permitting and lack of any emergencies, they continue, they estimate that they would continue through that project straight on. This coming Saturday at 10:00 a.m., we will have a flight raising ceremony to recognize the 117th anniversary of Philippine Independence Day. There's also a block watch meeting set up at 6:21, Washington Avenue. It's a neighborhood block watch meeting, members are pleased upon the movie there, giving some recommendations and suggestions. Family movie night is scheduled again on June 25th. We're looking forward to featuring Paddington, the movie, and then the second movie of the season will be on August 12th, and that will be the popular Disney movie Frozen. That's all I have to report to see.
I have nothing more.
Yeah, um, just a party is coming up, Kevin, and I was, uh, want to inform you that I have five to 10 volunteers with no pay that would like to join in the festivities, and I'd like to know who's on the committee, and the dates and the times. Also, 132, 134 Belmont Avenue, it's an inclosure closure with, they need clean to lean on that, weeds, grass, rodents, I have pictures here, they're really terrible. Next thing, the hotel on Heckel Street. Uh, the other night, we had about 17 people on the block into the house, and I understand the police were looking at it, but it's really not a police matter, it's really a construction code matter. And, um, we need to do something because it's taking the parking spaces away from the residents that are paying the taxes, and I guess the guy, the guy that owns the house, he's paying taxes on one family, and he has about 20 people in there. We need to do something really quickly because I think it's going to spread in this town, and we don't need this. The Friendly House, we just told, the striping and the surfacing will be done. Kevin?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Harris assures me that he anticipates, unless we have major weather events that would delay Geraldine, he anticipates.
Because they're really, really damaging the stuff out there, they really are. The air conditioning unit, they're putting graffiti on it, we need to do something with that.
I believe as soon as that's paved, the community, Kevin, yourself can, can be good for the new owners.
All right, that would be great. The benches in the city park, I mean, they're paid for, they're there, and they are going to be installed, because as I said, Joey Pesci and his family in Zaro, they want those benches in, or they want their money. And I do have a volunteer that wants to come to the city park, he's going to give you a list, so we can have, get that pond in great order, so that we can have a grand opening of the park, because it's so beautiful, and we need to do something with that. Then we have these cars on Belmont Avenue, 254, 260 is the address. Cars on two lots, I don't know how they got away with it all these years, but number one, it's residential property, and they're paying taxes of $1,700, which I was paying that, and $5,724 on the other lot. I understand they got summonses, and they're going to go to court, so we really have to watch what's going on there, it's not fair. There's gasoline in those cars, the people are there, and an investigation needs to go on that. Then there's another basement apartment on Belmont Avenue that I will give you the number, Kevin. Somebody sent me that anonymous letter. And on 302, I understand they're renovating with no permits, no windows in the basement?
302.
302, right. And the last thing is Wallace Street, when will that be done?
Uh, after Geraldine Street, then we'll go to the Friendly House. Friendly House project should take two, three weeks, weather permitting, and then move on to Wallace.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Kevin, a few things, that's good news that you just said tonight about Karma Avenue, so I'll report that to the residents of Karma. Also, I'm very happy to see that Union Avenue is being paved, we did talk about that back in January, and where the county is coming through, Union Avenue, ours, we're speaking, they're currently working on that. The quarter of Little Street and Floyd, there are gigantic potholes there, and so that really needs to be filled in. Also, a couple of meetings ago, I brought up, and actually it was in paper too, that house on Greenmont Street, I know we did a clean to lean on that, because it'll get passed by and the property is cleaned. However, we still have a problem there, there are no steps, no doors, there's a door, there are no steps, no ports, there's a door, and then you just, comes right down. And there's a pile of bricks at the side, and that must have been steps at one time. So I am still getting calls from neighbors, they're very happy that it's cleaned, but they're saying to me, why do we have to follow the codes that have steps, and it's fair that they don't have it here? And this is going on for a while with that house, so if you could look into that. And speaking of houses, this was a big issue a couple of years ago, what's going on with that house on Graylock? I know it's all pointed out, do you have anything on that?
Still no foreclosure action on that house. Still, basically, in many cases.
So.
No, 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 there was a deal on it for sale, and that deal failed unfortunately. And when I discussed it with the realtor, he advised me that the beholders were unable to negotiate a price that would satisfy everyone, so it's basically back to the yard board on my property. Hopefully, tonight's ordinance will give us more enforcement opportunities on these, on these vacant and abandoned homes.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a, a business on Washington Avenue called American Food Service, 444 Washington, right next to Firehouse.
Can't hear you.
And, um.
It's been a long way.
And the, almost any time you drive past there, the entire sidewalk is loaded with restaurant equipment, refrigerators, they even park their trucks up there to load and unload, it really doesn't look very good at all, and I'm wondering if there's something you can do about that.
Sir?
And the only other thing is on the Friendly House, Pastor Malo from the Silver Lake Baptist Church called me to ask about their desire to be involved, trying to help profit the Friendly House, most as ready to go, to make a substantial contribution to the town for that, to help, you know, outfit with recreation supplies, kitchen, or those kinds of things. So I suppose that that would be something the committee would take up once you guys get started. That's it.
Yeah, Kev, can you add 52 Columbus Avenue onto that list of the abandoned houses?
Excuse me, is that a private meeting up there?
Yeah.
What you do have an audience tonight.
All right. Kevin?
Yes.
52 Columbus Ave, 52 Columbus, all right, Kevin, with the abandoned house, it needs, there's a fence that fell onto the sidewalk, onto, on the corner of Mayor, it's, it's pretty bad. Also, when we go out to bid for the paving next year, could we put a schedule in there or a timeframe? Because right now, the rate this is going, we're going to be paving into September, October.
The biggest response and complaint I received back from the engineer, as well as his reports, and we have the papers, is that unfortunately, with the harsh weather that we had in early part of the year, and the extreme cold even up until early back, late April, it really delayed the projects this year. Now they, as you know, they bid on multiple town projects.
Well, that's the problem, we could put it in the back burner once they, once they disavowed it.
Make it out real sweet, you trust me.
Maybe we could split the contracts, where, you know, not give it all to one person?
Uh, we probably have to split the jobs, you're right, yeah.
Like the garbage contract, one person bids on each town. You're not going to split nothing amongst nobody.
It's worth a shot.
It's worth a shot, it's not going to happen.
And then also, did we start doing any meetings for fireworks?
Yeah.
Or you didn't?
Yeah, we already signed the contract for fireworks, the display this year will be bigger than last year, that's been solidified, reviewed the insurance obligations, we are going to host a meeting next week with all the necessary departments to make sure that the event is bigger and better than last year, certainly properly planned.
Kevin, you mentioned the block watch meeting?
Yes.
Where is that?
Uh.
What? She's up at the American Legion, 7 o'clock, 2:30.
2:30.
6:20.
So try it once again, see if anybody shows up. Nobody shows up, that's it.
Um, Kevin, on the, on the lights on the, did they give us any idea of timeframe over the course in the next, I guess, three, four months? That's when they're going to, they're going to try to finish before.
Reinstallation on June 22nd, it should be nine days. September 22nd completion. They can do anywhere from one to three pulls per day, depending upon the weather.
So hopefully before the, before October 1st, if somewhere. 64 Jefferson.
Yes.
We're hearing that they've started construction, but can we find out if they ever hold the permit?
I actually met with code official this afternoon on that exact topic. They have been buying and haven't observed any work, progress toward business hours.
Right.
No permit activity at the moment. It's possible that they are, they're without the miss, they are, but on the watch list, hopefully they can observe that.
Yeah, they could take a look, because supposedly they put boards up on fascia, which weren't there before. I might go take a look myself, too. And I think it's 21 Plenge, I think is abandoned, can we confirm that? See what's going on with that?
Communications call?
A request received from St. Peter's Church for permission to hold the annual parish statement on Sunday, June 14th.
Mega motion, move it.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Request received from the Great Baptist Church, holding a block party on Saturday, August 29th, from 1:00 to 5:00 on Greenmont Street to Little and Overlook.
Mega motion, approve it.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Request received from Voice God Truth, 350, for permission to utilize, get with you from the annual, the Great American, back to your PMV, from 12 noon on Saturday, June 27th, to 12 noon on Sunday, June 28th.
Mega motion, approve it, as well as if it doesn't interfere with anything else.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Request received from Voice God Truth, 350, for permission to utilize, get with you from the annual, the Great American, back to your PMV, from 12 noon on Saturday, June 27th, to 12 noon on Sunday, June 28th.
Mega motion, approve it, as well as if it doesn't interfere with anything else.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number two for introduction, and it's a couple of bond orders, commanding certain organizations and various prior bond ordinances and transferring and reauthorization, $74,856.97 of such organization not needed for the original purposes, in order to provide for the acquisition of utility vehicles in the township of Bellevle and the county of Bellevle.
Mega motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number two for introduction, and ordinance on the township of Bellevle, pending Chapter 4, Section 18, of the codified ordinances of the township of Bellevle entitled Operation of Dealers in Secondhand Gold and Silver Jewelry.
Mega motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number three for introduction, and ordinance to amend or buy general ordinances of the township of Bellevle, Chapter 2, 2-10, entitled Department of Police.
Mega motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders six for public hearing, and second and final reading, ordinance number one for public hearing, and ordinance to comply with the Smoke Free Air Act, Chapter 383 of the State of New Jersey to prohibit smoking on public.
Mega motion, open it for a public hearing.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number three for introduction, and ordinance to amend or buy general ordinances of the township of Bellevle, Chapter 2, 2-10, entitled Department of Police.
Even in open park situations?
I, I guess it depends.
That's kind of the point of whether or not exciting.
Anything else, anything can be litigated. You know, I'm sure anybody wants to litigate, and people try.
Well, that's the hope to avoid.
Yeah, no doubt about it. In the case that Mr. Mattingly referenced, and I believe that what they found was that the state assembly in New York never passed a law prohibiting it, and that's where the loophole fell. And according to this, it's, you know, to comply with the state.
Comply with the state.
So, that seems to be all it's saying, is whatever state it was.
Whatever state it was, we're complying.
Yep. Thanks for the clarification. Mega motion, move, propose public hearing, and move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number two for public hearing, and ordinance amending Chapter 10, the codified ordinances of the township of Bellevle, entitled Water Rates.
Mega motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number two for public hearing, and ordinance amending Chapter 10, the codified ordinances of the township of Bellevle, entitled Water Rates.
Mega motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number three for introduction, and ordinance to amend or buy general ordinances of the township of Bellevle, Chapter 2, 2-10, entitled Department of Police.
Mega motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Orders number two for public hearing, and ordinance amending Chapter 10, the codified ordinances of the township of Bellevle, entitled Water Rates.
Mega motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick little roll.
Councilmember Cosarali?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longa?
Yes.
Atari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor for the.
Yes.
Mr. Franch.
Good evening, Mayor of Council. I'm voting for raising the water rates again. Some of the recording that you need more money to maintain the system. Part of the reason you maintain it is because you're neglect of the system. You keep paving the streets without fixing the water mains, then we have water leaks. It leaks for weeks, sometimes months on the streets. We're paying north for the water, and it's not going to anybody's meter, that's going down the sewer, and, well, about this for years. So the, the reason all this expense in the water bill is your fault, and previous councils. So, once again, taxpayers are going to get whacked with the bills, and they're hard on hard to pay, if you look at the last week's paper, I don't know if you've seen it, there's almost 400 people who pay their water bills. You've got the tax sale, but it's all water, almost 400, remember. You had almost 400 tax sales in December. When are you getting the message?
Well, if the leaks are in the street, the residents are not being charged for that, Mr. Franch. What we're doing is we're going to charge the residents for the amount of water that they are using.
Mr. Mayor, maybe you don't understand, the water that comes into the town of Bellevle is metered on the outskirts of Melville. Every drop that comes in, we pay north for.
But I mean.
If it goes through the meter, you're correct, we pay for it, but when it leaks in the street, we're paying for it.
We're paying north for it, but we're not getting the proper amount from the residents of the town that we pay north.
Because you're letting through the broken water leaks, you're letting it leak into the sewer.
I know I can never convince you, but it's different. It's different for when it's leaking at the curb, yes, and for when it's going through the meters, through the, through the residents.
Right, but by not taking care of the water mains, you get more and more leaks, which are leaking into the street, which we, the taxpayers, are paying for.
That don't, that, that leak don't make an individual turn the faucet on.
Mr. Mayor, you know, you're the one that's not understanding. The water comes in the meter from north, the minute it goes through that meter, we're obligated to pay north for that gallon of water.
Okay.
Now, if it leaks, before it gets to somebody's house or business, we're still paying north for it.
Yes.
Right, and who pays? The taxpayers pay for it in, in the general budget. So we're paying for the water that we're using, and we're paying for all the water that's being wasted from the water mains, because you refuse to fix the water lines, but you keep paving streets because they look glamorous, oh, new asphalt, and underneath everything is broken. And every street, within several months or a year, we've got water leaks on brand new streets.
So what about Portal that owes us $18,000? You just, when you pay us, when you can pay us, pay us?
Well, I agree with you, you got a former councilman on there, 2,800, shut it off. You had an indigenous brother and sister a few years ago, only 700, their water was shut off. Why aren't these people, their water shut off?
I agree, I say shut them off.
Well, that's, that's.
That's the only way you'll pay.
That's a different issue I was going to bring up, but the first point is, the extreme cause of this are because of the water leaking down the sewers from all these breaks. But the other thing, shut these people off, you got, how does a guy who's a big business man get away with 2,800, or like you said, 18,000, or whatever, there's someone there for 7,000, and a poor brother and sister that can't afford food for $700 over a year that didn't have water?
I could just provide you with an explanation as to the scope of the ordinance. Mr. Franch, it's only, you buy our water rates, water for the city of North, we've received annual increases from the city of North, but we haven't passed those along in a number of years. This will catch us up. Most municipalities increase their water rates on an annual basis. We have deferred that at least three years consecutively. So as a result of that deference, we need to catch up on, on the increases that we've incurred from the city of North, and in response to your numerous requests to explore the relining and cleaning of the water mains, at the direction of the mayor, back at the April meeting, I did instruct the municipal engineer to prepare a report as to give us an estimate of what it would take to reintroduce a clean and reline program. I have not yet received the response from the municipal engineer, but tomorrow I will likely remind him to provide you with that response.
I heard that, and, but, you know, it's not only heard in the home owner, the businesses, and, and again, it's not many years, we've had several increases over the past decade, and I know, and you know, because my business allows you to use a lot of water, and I have to reduce my prices to get customers to come in while all my costs go up, and I filed the tax bill, I gave you my tax return. I'm losing $1,000 a year, I can't sell the business, I'm losing $1,000 a year.
I can provide you with a list of our water rates, and even with the proposed increase, we are still more competitive than many municipalities within the county.
You know, that argument goes, because I can trade many municipalities which are lower than us.
I understand.
So I want to stay in our own house.
Thank you.
But please, don't call for this increase.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, good night, you're a mayor of council. My name is Jared Rollagre, and touching on the base of the water, the reason of me being here is that I still have an issue since from 2011, on the fourth, of an award bill that was over $1,000, where my average usage was touching a $4, $500. And when this was approached, and I requested, and I have it all documented, all letters, mailed, certified, and I was trying to resolve this matter, every time I came here with a threat that they were going to shut the water.
I don't want to stop you, but, of public participation, we'll go over your water.
Bring that up.
We'll bring it up, okay? This is not any word, sir.
Mega motion, close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
which are leaking into the streets, which we, the taxpayers, are paying for.
That leak don't make an individual turn the faucet on.
Mr. Mayor, you know, you're the one that's not understanding. The water comes in the meter from north. The minute it goes through that meter, we're obligated to pay north for that gallon of water. Now, if it leaks before it gets to somebody's house or business, we're still paying north for it.
Yes.
Right, and who pays? The taxpayers pay for it in the general budget. So, we're paying for the water that we're using and we're paying for all the water that's being wasted from the water mains, because you refuse to fix the water lines. But you keep paving streets because they look glamorous, oh, new asphalt, and underneath everything is broken. And every street within several months or a year, we got water leaks on brand new streets.
So, what about Portal that owes us eighteen thousand dollars? You just, when you pay us, when you can pay us, pay us?
Well, no, I agree with you. You got a former councilman on there, twenty-eight hundred, shut them off. You had an indigenous brother and sister a few years ago, only seven hundred, their water was shut off. Why aren't these people, their water shut off?
I agree, I say shut them off. That's the only way you'll pay.
That's a different issue I was gonna bring up, but the first point is the extreme cause of this are because of the water leaking down the sewers from all these breaks. But then they shut these people off. How does a guy who's a big business man get away with twenty-eight hundred, like you said, eighteen thousand, whatever, if someone there has seven thousand? And a poor brother and sister that can't afford food for seven hundred dollars over a year didn't have water?
I could just provide you with an explanation as to the scope of the ordinance. Mr. Frant, it's only, you buy our water rates, water for the city of Newark. We've received annual increases from the city of Newark, but we haven't passed those along in a number of years. This will catch us up. Most municipalities increase their water rates on an annual basis. We have deferred that at least three years consecutively. So, as a result of that deference, we need to catch up on the increases that we've incurred from the city of Newark. And in response to your numerous requests to explore the relining and cleaning of the water mains at the direction of the mayor back at the April meeting, I did instruct a municipal engineer to prepare a report as to give us an estimate of what it would take to reintroduce a clean and reline program. I have not yet received the response from the municipal engineer, but tomorrow I will remind him to provide you with that response.
I heard that, but it's not only heard in the home owner. The businesses, and again, it's not many years, we've had several increases over the past decade. And I know, and you know, because my business allows you to use a lot of water. And I have to reduce my prices to get customers to come in while all my costs go up. And I filed a tax bill, I gave you my tax return. I'm losing a thousand dollars a year, I can't sell the business. I lose a thousand dollars a year.
I can provide you with a list of our water rates. Even with the proposed increase, we are still more competitive than many municipalities within the county.
You know, that argument goes, because I can trade many municipalities which are lower than us. So, I want to stay in our own house. But please, don't call for this increase.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, good night, you're a mayor council. My name is Gerard Olagre, I'm touching on the base of the water. The reason of me being here is that I still have an issue since from two thousand and eleven on the fourth of an award bill that was over a thousand dollars, where my average usage was touching a four, five hundred dollars. And when this was approached and I requested, I have it all documented, all letters, mailed, certified, and I was trying to resolve this matter. Every time I came here with a threat that they were gonna shut the water...
I don't wanna stop you, but public participation, we'll go over your water.
Bring that up.
We'll bring it up, okay? This is not any word that's...
Mega motion, close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick poll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbaugh?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Tim Lumber?
Yes.
Mayor Capable?
Yes.
Ordinance number three for public hearing. As ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances of the township of Bellevue, Chapter Eight, Phipps, excuse me, many counterparties cases.
Mega motion, open it for public hearing.
We just closed public, we need to pass that.
No, no, she pulled, did it right.
We can do it that way.
We did it right.
Oh, you did both?
That's the way we're gonna do it. Doing it for the last...
I mind, I mind.
Mega motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick poll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbaugh?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Tim Lumber?
Yes.
Mayor Capable?
Yes.
Mega motion, close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick poll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbaugh?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Tim Lumber?
Yes.
Mayor Capable?
Yes.
Ordinance number four for public hearing. As ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances of the township of Bellevue, Chapter Eight, Phipps, excuse me, many counterparties cases. Where it's actually nine entitled Regulation Care Maintenance Security Act of the exterior of abandoned residential properties, and which is summoned to complain in an action to propose has been filed.
Mega motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick poll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbaugh?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Tim Lumber?
Yes.
Mayor Capable?
Yes.
Vic Mufuji, just one question. Sometimes they're abandoned, but an action is proposed that's not yet been filed. What about them? Somebody has to be shared.
In August, the state of New Jersey passed a statewide statute that allows municipalities to go after other sources of revenue and other institutes in order to keep the properties up to code. This ordinance here is in compliance with that statute that allows the town to go after creditors who have filed a notice of foreclosure action. It does not, that's what it does. It just gives the town another source of revenue so that you don't have to wait for a year or two or three for a bank or some other lender to actually take title to the property. It allows us to chase them as soon as they initiate foreclosure procedures. The assumption being that the owners have vacated and abandoned the properties. Therefore, the municipal code, the cleaning lead code, is not gonna be as helpful to get them to pay up quickly, but eventually, very quickly, eventually, the banks will start kicking in.
The hope is that you're gonna push the bank to do it faster. I mean, if a guy left the property, you're not gonna get anything from him anyhow. So, you really can't hit it.
Thank you. Mega motion, close public hearing, move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick poll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbaugh?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Tim Lumber?
Yes.
Mayor Capable?
Mega motion, open up public participation.
Second.
Quick poll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longbaugh?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Tim Lumber?
Yes.
Mayor Capable?
Sir, if you wanted to bring that up now?
We can talk about that.
My name is Gerard Olagre, I own Thirty-Six Washington Street, and I'm going through a problem that I've been trying to resolve since two thousand and eleven. The issue was, I got a bill for my water usage of over a thousand dollars, where the average is between four and five hundred. When I questioned the town, that I wasn't happy with the bill, if they would help me resolve it, it was told that there had to be a leak in the building and that. We checked everything, we didn't find anything. One of the things that's very easy to check, a water leak, if you have everybody not using water and you go down to the meter, there's a star quarter, a triangle that turns. So, if that thing is turning, that means there's a leak. If it doesn't turn, it means everyone shut off, everything is sound. So, that's a simple test we did. We made sure everything was tight as far as the building, and I requested a simple test on the meter. I was told that, yes, you will pull the meter out, have it tested, and come back with a problem, because on the research, I also noticed that they had a problem in this particular meter, that it skips on the number nine and it goes to the one. And if I look at my average usage, which was about eighty per, you know, quarter, whatever they charged me, this time was two hundred, which explains, two hundred and eighty-seven, it explains the skip. But nevertheless, all I requested as a taxpayer was a simple meter test. The town promised me, I came and saw Mr. Victor Kennedy. He was at that time in charge. So, I did, and I added all the certified letters, his acknowledgement, and he would pull the meter out and have it tested. What happened was, the meter was never taken out, was never tested. They waited for the meter to be replaced, at the scheduled replacement with the new meters. So, I'm at a one thousand eighty dollar bill. I kept getting shut off notices. This, I had to pay now, one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. So, we talked about four hundred and eighteen dollars interest. In four years, that the town neglected to sit down and take care of this problem. You know, if they would have done the meter test, presented to me and says, look, this is it, and it's wrong, fine. So, the reason is, I don't think the town took the proper steps, and now I'm sitting there with a bill of this nature.
Okay, sir. Do we have a book of checking if the meter's bad or...
They replaced the meter.
How much is your water bill now?
I paid three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
No, quarter.
My last bill, the last one that they sent me, which is four, five months, three hundred and eighty-nine. I have already saved.
I had a conversation with the reporter, this gentleman just two weeks ago, and I also discussed the situation in detail with the water department. They assured me that the meter that was renewed was accurate and that the water billing was accurate. There was no report from any plumber that certifying that there were no leaks in the property. The property is also a four-family property, and it's not owner-occupied. It's absentee landlord, correct?
Well, I'm not dead sure, but the record shows that, you know, if anything, even on the, we all own homes. If you own, and there's a leak in a twelve, it keeps cycling. You hear the box, it's annoying, it's the simplest. You know, people are gonna complain, and it would have been taken care if that was the case. All I'm saying is that, why wasn't the meter tested? There is nothing in black and white that you can give me that this was done.
The water department assures me that the meter was accurate?
Can you get that proof?
We have to get, you know, I wanted to see. I never got a response in writing. I was never given a copy that this meter, serial number, so and so, because I got pictures of the meter. And you can see on the picture itself that the numbers even are like halfway. You don't get a full clear number five, six, and so forth. They are halfway on both sides. Okay, so, and that was acknowledged by Mr. Kennedy. So, they have changed people in the town, and this has moved on. And it's just like, you know, I come here and say, look, I got another notice. And they say, okay, go home, we're gonna call you to come in and sit down and we're gonna resolve. And this is what I get, another notice. I mean, they have to come up with something, right? If they're saying and assuring that there has to be done...
You come in with Thursday morning, you see Mr. Esposito, and we'll have somebody from the water department, if the meter's faulty, we'll do, you know, we'll amend it, but if it's not faulty...
Notice.
You're talking like Kevin said, if you're an absentee landlord, we don't know what the other people... Maybe the toilet's broken, they don't care.
Exactly. Well, that's why I'm saying, I mean, I'm clear in my head, make sure there's no leak. If the town should have done the test and produced me a report and says this meter was tested, that is answered the box.
Okay, see Mr. Esposito Thursday morning.
Okay.
Okay?
And bring your current water bill to us soon. Bring your current water bill.
Sure, thank you.
The new streetlights, little lights out there, and the two lower ones really light up the sidewalk. The one right in front of Town Hall, that same pole where it was there a few years ago, I told you, I don't know why and who, you planted a tree twenty inches from the pole. That tree died, and you got a new one right next to the new pole, twenty inches. Those two lower lights that light up the sidewalk, that tree's gonna grow. It's gonna grow right over the lights and all that. I mean, who makes the, who lays out where to plant the tree? How do you plant a tree twenty inches from a light pole?
Newer trees selected are not the type of trees that will grow as high as the credit trees.
We should move that tree.
It's right under the lights, so the lights are gonna be ineffective, it's shining down on the sidewalk. You defeat the purpose of the light that light up the sidewalk if you put a tree, which is gonna block the light. And the other thing, the light that lights up the Town Hall, I think it's gotta be adjusted. It's more to the lower left-hand corner to raise up, to light up. The upper right-hand corner of Town Hall isn't bright at night. The friendly house, you formed a committee to, I didn't understand the rest, made to figure out what you're gonna use it for. I mean, all along, this has been for recreation facility. It was for years and years, it's supposed to be. Now, why are we gonna form a committee to decide what we're gonna use the friendly house for? Any bond issues you're, it's all a recreation thing. So, you know, here we just go around in circles, I don't know, it's over ten years that we've lost, other towns do things, and a couple of months they're done. Here we go decades and nothing is done. And the senior, I know, Mr. Mayor, you don't like when I do the work corrupt, but you know, the senior citizen facility over there, I mean, that's, clearly that word applies to what's going on there. That was advertised and used on the letter, that's not senior citizen housing, it's age restricted.
We go through the second meeting.
The what?
We go through the second meeting, it's age restricted.
Yeah, but it gets worse. Now that they're building, we see what they do. They're taking just about all of the parking for the senior citizen recreation buildings there for years, you know, it was originally subdivided in half.
Which is not true, did they have, don't they have as much parking in that senior citizen building as they had prior to this building?
Based upon the parking plans that we have, we have the same number of parking spaces. Parking lot will be reconfigured. It has been reconfigured. Once they get further along with construction, they will repave that parking lot and re-strike that parking lot, it will be at no expense to municipality.
You know, I keep hearing this, and again, when this, you sent it to the planning board for another subdivision over there, very quietly, and your planning board does nothing, but again, the council wants us to approve this. I, you know, I've been to other towns, and they've actually discussed things, not your plan. Oh, yeah, he wants to do it, it's a done deal. But the one night, you had a subdivision there, and I asked, and Mr. Esposito told me, no, 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 they're only taking a couple of feet of the wood, the shrubs that are near the railroad tracks. When I went and got the plans, and I went out and measured, it took over sixty feet. Half of this from the building to there, and half of the parking that the seniors had on that side of the building. And now, that it's construction underway, I went there the other day, they're building on that part. Their building on that part was originally supposed to be the half where all the senior citizen recreation building parked. So, little by little by little, and now you got the quote-unquote temporary curb cut for construction on Franklin Avenue. What's next? Somebody goes, we talk to the Vincenzo to allow them to make the curb cut on Franklin Avenue, and then it'll be a driveway which will reduce more parking. These, you know, I keep, you say, I bring it up every meeting. Yes, I bring it up when I think it's gonna happen, and then sure enough, these bad things happen, Mr. Mayor. And so, you can care less about the senior citizens. These developers got carte blanche in their town. The hell with them seniors, they're gonna croak in a few years.
That's not true. That's not true.
That's what it appears. And not only the actions, but the actual construction going down there proves, proves that you can care less for the seniors.
Let's see what happens. If we, if the seniors don't have enough parking, which they, the same amount that they had before this construction, then we have a problem. But if they do, there's no problem.
Well, you don't have to wait and see what happens, it's already done. The building is built on that part of the parking lot. And finally, the last thing, I've been bringing this up for two years. How does somebody get away with them back on our property and back in the DAV building, storing their boats, their construction vehicles and all? I got the license plates, I can get the license plates, can't you, police department? Now, who's getting paid to allow them to park on public property?
Have you been back there recently?
Huh?
Have you been back there recently?
About three weeks ago.
Yeah, we had a meeting, we had a meeting.
We had a talk, we moved.
We moved.
Again, this show gave, he's gonna be known now, because it's warm, they'll put it in the water. You're gonna come back next month there? This is a couple of years I've been bringing this up.
It was all done without any authorization from Mayor and Council. And nobody became aware of it, we brought it to their attention. Unfortunately, as you know, the commander of the DAV passed away. The new commander, when he decided the meeting, assured us that they would remedy it, take all those vehicles off the truck.
Look, they were, they're going to the DAV? This is not the DAV's problem, this is the town's problem. Who owns a boat, get it out today? It's a simple matter, had license plates on, I got the license plate numbers home. Don't blame it on the DAV, and the poor dead commander. This is the linked deposit, the next day, get it off. I had my car jacked up last year, it changed a tire, and the pop says, you can't fix cars on the street. I'm fixing the tire. Told me they got immediately, lowered it jack. This guy gets away with it free.
Thanks, Dan, thanks for your... Mrs. Charles.
Freedom, Mayor Capable? When you come out of Belmont Avenue and Franklin Street, okay? There's a tree that is so big right now, it is covering the traffic light. You can't see the red and the green, and you do not turn on red. So, could you please have the town trim that tree down so you can please see the traffic light? Thank you.
Florence? Florence, it raises her hand.
She raised it, she raised it. Oh, okay, you go ahead, okay. We're both flash from one thirty-two Franklin Street. First of all, thank you to the Mayor and Council for the lovely speed demon thingy on Franklin, or, excuse me, on Magnolia. Does that have a camera, just out of curiosity?
We can't tell, they're never going to know.
We promise...
Operational security, man.
Shh, we promise we won't tell, right?
Videotaping.
Okay, yeah, yeah, like it always should be, but I digress. Okay, the lovely firehouse, you knew I wasn't gonna let that one go. Now, come on, kids, what's going on with the lovely firehouse? Because first of all, from the election that was just held in there, the lights are still on the building, so turn off the lights. The grass needs to be cut, and, yes, Mr. Kennedy, to answer your question from last time, I was in the building, it doesn't look that bad, so...
I mean, you should go up there and walk through that building again.
Yes, we should.
I don't know what your idea of bad is, that that building's a disgrace.
Well, I would, I would love to see...
Ask Councilwoman Burke, she came in the building with, is that building fine, Marie?
No, it's really not. I would, I would love to see the plans and what, you know, what's going on. I asked about, I asked about this, you know, a couple of months ago, and I was good. I promised I wouldn't ask, and I have not been asking, I've been behaving myself. So, I've given you a couple of months.
It's not a question of you behaving yourself. You're a taxpayer, you're a citizen, but where were you the last six, seven years it's been closed?
Living next door to me.
You're coming.
Living next door to me. It hasn't been closed for six or seven years, so it'll be closed for going on three.
No, it's called longer than three years. Three years.
Three years, three years. So, I've been coming. So, even if I haven't shown up...
Yeah, I've been coming three years, you only come in the last year.
Right, but regardless of how long I've been coming or not, I'm not the only one who's complaining about the firehouse. I can't be the only one complaining about the firehouse in the entire town. The councilwoman has brought it up numerous times, and it's all been promised, oh, it'll be open, it'll be open. We're talking in June, we're talking...
I don't even promise that, show me that, you're ready that somebody promised it be open in June.
Can I finish, please?
No, you're saying that you hear it's gonna be open in June, who told you that?
No, 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 I, can I finish what I was gonna say, please?
Well, say the truth. Don't say that you hear promises that it's gonna be open in June.
No.
Because nobody ever said that.
What I was going to say, Councilman, was, I was going to say, it was promised to be open by the end of this year.
By who?
In June.
By who?
By this council.
When?
Three or four meetings ago.
Kelly, could you find that statement in a minute? Please.
Okay, it was promised...
Last month that we promised to open up the firehouse.
All this stuff was promised to be, oh, the town is gonna do so much in the next two months and all this, and all that. Nothing is being done. I asked about the tree being either trimmed or moved on Magnolia, where the sign is being blocked, nothing is being done. We come to these meetings and time after time, and, you know, voice our opinion, we all, the old, everybody shows up, the same people keep showing up with the same questions and the same problems. Nothing is being done. And I don't mean to sound rude, but come on, something's gotta be done. Thank you.
Mr. Frant, flash from one thirty-two Franklin Street. Councilman Kennedy, it doesn't matter if you're here three years, a year, whatever. We've lived here eighteen years, okay?
We already did.
Yes, we only recently were able to arrange our schedule so we could attend these meetings recently. But that doesn't matter, okay? Not everybody can come here all the time, ask questions, that sort of thing. That's one of the reasons why I think that the idea of filming these meetings or recording them is so important, but besides that point, it doesn't matter, okay? If we're here one meeting, if we're here every meeting for the past ten years, our questions still matter.
They do matter. Don't say, for the last six years we've been doing this, for the last two months ago, you promised something was gonna be done by the, at the end of the, at the end of the year.
If I remember, I don't know if it was a promise, I believe that a projection was made that it'll be done by the end of the year.
We'll find out, and overlook in the record.
Thank you.
Jeff? Jeff Mattingly, fifty-six Walnut. Kevin, do you know what's going on with the library through the chair, I'm sorry? What is the progress at the library? Seems to me...[1664.12] Seems to me.
The destruction? I'm gonna tell you right now, tomorrow night there's a library board meeting. You're welcome to attend. I mean, the public's invited, they could expect the concern over that library.
Do you, do you have a seat there, Mayor, don't you?
Yeah.
You plan on going?
I, I, tomorrow, no, because my grand tour is coming in from Arizona, and I have to be with her, I'm sorry.
I, I got you, tomorrow's my twentieth anniversary. I'm not gonna be there either, but the point is.
I'm not happy, I am not happy with the library. Okay? I'm not happy with the library. I don't like the way the outside looks. Look at the old library, it was beautiful. I, I don't, I don't like it.
I, I go monthly dropping off.
We're stuck in an house, we have to finish it.
Yeah, okay, I've been, I was getting the next month, next month for three months now, I heard there's gonna be a grand opening, reopening in September.
And I'm gonna try to stop that because it doesn't look like it's ready for a grand reopening in September.
It really doesn't. In fact, it doesn't look like very much has changed in the past three months as I go past it.
I agree with you, I mean.
Uh, thank you. So hopefully we can get on that contract and lean on that contractor, and to whatever degree the contract stipulated payment levels and.
What I know about, what I, since I've been going to the meetings for the past year, there's a three phases, phases to that. This is only the second phase, I guess the third phase was to clean the outside.
Maybe we should run out of money for the third phase and tidy up where we're at.
Yeah, the building, the way it is, terrible.
Well, well, let's review it carefully, cause I didn't, um, it doesn't look like it's flowing real well.
No. But here's another member of the library board, should bring her on.
And in fact, the town owns the building.
Are you Florence?
I'm sorry.
The town owns the building, and they never, ever asked us to do anything in that building.
I, I respect that, and I'm sorry if I don't say that that was your fault. You should've jumped on me for that, I remember saying at the time, that building and their budget is an extension of this municipality. It had nothing to do with the bridging that was trying to happen to the board from what I understand in various expense areas. It was an invasion, in my opinion, of the authority of this council. So, uh, just one other thing, Kevin, the, another thing, rather, the trucking guys that are down there on the property on Courtland across from D W. They're fixing equipment on there, like rolling fix-it guys, heavy duty, swinging the boom around fast, fully extended. This guy falls out of that thing, and he's a repair guy, and lands on the asphalt, breaks his back, we're gonna get sued.
We have determined that those vehicles are owned and operated by a subcontractor of public service.
I appreciate that. We have a letter of insurance, liability.
Yesterday, I instructed public service to have them do a different review. I'm hoping that between now and the end of the week that will take place, otherwise I'll have to ask the police department to pay that property a visit and make those, make sure those trucks are back.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a circus now. With the summer events going on down there now, the cars are all over around these trucks. I haven't, haven't seen any kids trying to climb in the back of the chipper as of late, but they're certainly all over the place. It's kind of scary. And another circumstance, they had the rear end dumper up, both rear wheels off of the back of the truck, and we're working on it. Lands and crushes somebody, it's our liability. All right, now, finally, really, I have a serious matter here. The, the Bellevle Adult Medical Daycare and Senior Health Services next to Taco Bell was at five eighteen Washington. We're doing medical transport for these people to the point where it's multiple times a week going on a period of years. We have paid EMTs. We can't staff firehouses for lack of personnel. This is expensive stuff here, and we're assuming liability. You pick up someone who qualifies for medical daycare, they're basically individuals that are not worthy of being hospitalized but have serious issues. Now, yesterday, day before it might have been, I come back from lunch, I'm headed down Little, and North Arlington is responding to a Bellevle emergency. Our vehicles are always in the shop, sometimes two out of three. It's, it's really a sad situation when somebody's being medically transported by our EMTs out of our town, in most cases, I'm pretty sure, they qualify and, and go there. People are coming in on their own steam in the morning, but then the company, which is a for-profit company, is calling us up because they feel that they can't transport without qualified medical people, they're not healthy enough to move home.
So they're sending them back through us?
We're a taxi service for them. And they're under investigation. Mr. Ushak reported on this in March of twenty thirteen by the state for Medicaid fraud. Millions, it was said. Haven't heard a resolution, couldn't find one today on, on Google. The fact of the matter is that it might be time to consider if this is a distinct liability that we can't avoid going to a private ambulance or volunteer service that has very specific circumstances under what they will move. And as far as I'm concerned right now, they should receive a letter from the town stating that if you're running this type of facility, you have to engage private services for your transport, it's undermining our ability to service our town, and we can't assume the liability of your Medicare payments. Now, multiple times a week, sometimes more than once a day, I understand.
So we, we need to investigate and make sure that, that there are ambulances going outside of our town, is that what's happening?
We're pretty sure of it.
Okay, so that's, that's, well, that's what we need to confirm.
Yes, please notify the chief and determine what the frequency of calls is and the circumstances under which they're being called in. Is this a medical emergency?
Right.
These are EMTs designed to service our township that we pay for and insure.
And are we transporting them outside?
And imagine if something happens. And they're delicate, they're, in some cases, maybe glass. You drop, you're sued. We're sued.
We'll find out, but you know, I, I really feel if they're in our town, if something, they're sick or injured, it's our obligation to respond.
If it's just for a transport. If it's a nine-one-one, if it's just to transport back to their home.
Yeah, transport's different.
That's a whole different story.
Being fragile, and do you need to be transported to the hospital? Or do you want to be transported home?
Yeah, no, that's.
Because for me, one's a private service versus an emergency.
Exactly. If it's an emergency, you're gonna, you know.
If I'm having a heart attack, I don't want to wait for North Arlington to get here.
I agree.
How are we doing with the cable station? Have we made any progress with reaching out to Comcast?
Um, yes. We sent a letter. Also, today, we received two proposals, waiting on a third as far as the videotape needs.
Who can we send the letter to?
Comcast.
Comcast requesting?
The O Chalmers.
Wonderful, thank you.
That doesn't mean we're a do.
Yeah, sorry, we'll, we'll cross that bridge. I'm, you know, I'm left foot, right foot, I don't, I don't have. I'd like to just commend you all, really, you seemed like you were all really engaged tonight, and you went around, with the exception of the Hawaiian guy who popped in the side door, didn't get his chance. Everybody else seemed really engaged, representing the town and doing, trying to move it in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Kidding me, I'm Karen Womble, I'm a global advisor on social policy, and Diane from the YMCA, over in this here as well. We just want to thank you so much for looking into and then making your projects go free. We think that this is one of the most important projects that you can work on to help kids to become and remain back to free. Spoke is on more about preventable disease and death, and we've educated some of the communities in Essex County on this, and we want to thank Councilmember Val for coming on April seventh to YMCA average school program. He delivered your certificates from the mayor and council, thanking the students that participated in that program that day, that turned Val to back to free living. And it was just a pleasure meeting you, Councilmember Val, and we're so happy that you educated your fellow council members and mayors on this particular topic. So as a guarantee of state current health, we have three signs to give you. We have forty-four signs, and I brought them today, and I can connect with your staff later on. We also have stickers that we can provide to the ordinance holders, and this is a great way to educate the community on new policy. One of the suggestions that we have, which we've done, in fact, I did this last week in Milburgh, we did a ribbon cutting ceremony to educate the community, and so I think that Diane, perhaps maybe we can coordinate with her group of students, and if this is of interest to you, we have giant gold scissors that we can use, and big red ribbon, and it's a great way, again, to educate the community on the new policy. And the signs help with self-enforcement, this is really about educating the public, so leave these signs up there, we pick them back to the appropriate place.
Okay, the manager should take a moment.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else from the theater?
Can I go with this one? Florence, I want to speak.
Kevin wants me to speak.
Florence is waiting to the end, she's waiting to the end.
No, Kevin would like me to speak, so.
That's right, Florence.
Well, first of all, going to the senior building, we are inconvenienced a lot down there, but I do go over to the man that's in charge of it, with the project, and many a time we have to tell them, get things moving and get them out of our way. And I just hope that when this project is finished, that we're not gonna lose any part of the property that we have left. And I did talk to Mr. Esposito about the parking lot, it does have to be reconfigured with the parking, because even the man at the sheds say we, we did lose some places, and if it's gone back the way we had it, we gain those places back for parking. And they do cooperate as much as they can with us over there. And I, the other, last week, we had an incident with our bus coming in from Atlantic City where we had to let the people off in the street, and needless to say, I really live into Joe Marillo about it, so I don't think he has much love for me right now.
Even those kids' prom.
But, yeah, the kids' prom is right. Wherever their car landed, that's where they parked, so we couldn't get in there if we tried. But I did speak to Mr. Esposito, and he got it straightened out for me, and hopefully that between that housing and the bus rides and things we do, I don't know, sometimes I'm, I wonder, like, where are we going and what's happening? But let's hope for the best down there as far as what the seniors have left in, in that place. As far as the library, I invite the public to please come to our meetings, and we're just as frustrated as anybody else about getting that building completed, we've been working very hard, but when you have contractors waiting for things that are needed, necessary to complete the job, and it takes forever to, the things to get there, well, what can we do? We're doing the best we can. And it's terrible for the employees because they're not in the positions where they should be working in that building. But let the public come and see that, we really are trying to work to get that thing completed, because right at the beginning I said, you go down Washington Avenue, it looks like an abandoned building. You know, we want it looking like a building again, like a library. I went to a classes over in Seacorpus a couple of weeks ago as trustee, and several of us went over, and my God, we looked at that library and it was, there's no comparison to what we've got sitting over here on, on Washington Avenue. It's, it's just built, it's beautiful. And they have this room upstairs for these meetings and all, and it was the state association of, you know, librarians that had this, a class up there for us, the duties of trustees and all. And that's the kind of thing we want to see, get our building finished and bring some of that stuff into our building, where people come in, you know, and have a meeting and, a reason to be there, and get people to come to use the library. Because right now, I, I agree, it is a mess, and we're working very hard at it. Tomorrow night is our meeting, the whole town should come and take a look around and find out, and listen to how hard we're trying to get this project underway and finished.
Yeah, but Flo, Florence, when is it gonna be finished?
I have the same question.
You go down there, I mean, it's, nothing against you, Florence, because we all know
Oh, I know.
what happened behind this and all.
Yes.
But it should have been left alone.
Yeah, I'm staying away from a lot of that. We've been on top of it, and the new president has been at every construction meeting and really working hard at it, and they, the contractor keeps promising another date, and they're always moving it and moving it, and, you know, waiting for this and waiting for that. Railings come in that are crooked, that don't fit where they should fit. Well, that's not our fault, that's the contractor's fault. So, you know, and we've run into these problems, unfortunately. And as far as the township of Belleville, I'm a fixture here for many years, as many of these people know. I've been coming to meetings forever. I took over where Edith DeFeo left off. And so everything is not really bad. There's a lot of nice things that have happened in this town, and things have moved ahead, and people trying, and you have to remember, this former government, you're changing people every so often. He leaves office, I don't like what he did, so I change it and say we're not gonna do it. He comes into office and he's had another idea. Let's try to complete one project at a time, and that's what you people have been trying to do. Get things completed the way they should be. But this is not the worst town around, believe me, it's not the worst town around. And, and I, I don't like to hear it torn down. I've been coming too many years to know that things have progressed. Some things maybe not so, but many things have been done that are very good for this town, and I don't want to see it torn apart unless you've been at all these meetings all these years and witnessed what I have witnessed.
Florence, Edith is still with us, you know. Edith is still with us, you know that.
And since you invited everybody to come tomorrow, you better order double the sandwiches.
Oh, no, no sandwiches, no sandwiches.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Bob Brown?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Malba?
Yes.
Miss Torrey?
Yes.
Make a motion with a consent agenda?
Second.
I want to take off Resolution one and Resolution twelve.
No. It may not be a liability though.
Chill.
It may not be a liability though. There's nothing going to happen here.
Councilmember Bob Brown?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Malba?
Yes.
Miss Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay, Resolution twelve, the radios, I wouldn't give them the right time of day, I'll vote no on that.
Make a motion, move.
Second.
Councilmember Bob Brown?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Malba?
Yes.
Miss Torrey?
No.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes. Mayor?
Is there a reason we don't want to get you? Why? They, they're seven million dollars on our budget, we're gonna give them radios that we could auction off? Absolutely not.
What do they do?
What?
I don't want them to spend any more money than they have.
Oh, please. So that should have happened two years ago.
I mean, it's for the, for safety of the kids.
For safety, what do you call it? Three million dollars in cameras and stuff.
And you have one from your business there.
Yeah, make a, the resolution, township of Belleville County X is designating the Bellevle Equities LLC and the re, and the redevelopment of block two five oh one, lot one, dare, one point oh one, five twenty Belleville Avenue pursuant to the local redevelopment housing laws. New Jersey State's down to forty dot A, somebody calling twelve A dash one. Make a motion, move it.
Second.
All right, this is something that has to be done before the plan board meeting.
Five twenty Belleville.
It's the resolution naming the developer, just papers, but they're already starting.
Making the elderly.
Name the, name the redevelopment.
Five twenty double A.
So.
Okay, four of all.
Councilmember Bob Brown?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Malba?
Yes.
Torrey?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor?